We're here for a city council meeting and it is Tuesday, February 22, 2022. We'll start this meeting with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Here.
Wyffenbach. Roberts. Strowman.
Here.
Armstrong.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Drew.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. I believe our invoker is not here tonight. Are you guys up for it? We'll have an invocation by Councilmember Pat Jones. Following the invocation will be the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Please join me in a mindful state of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather tonight in a free world, in a free society. We thank you for the ability for us to work together, to talk together, to agree, to disagree, and to do what is in the best interest of our community. We pray tonight for those who are not in such a setting, and we ask that you would release the powers of peace in the world rather than allow the powers of darkness to grow. We ask for your blessing upon our meeting tonight and all those here with us. We pray for your guidance and your peace. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivi-
Thank you, everyone. Now, we're on to the adoption of the agenda, and I have a bit of a surprise for the city council. Some things come up just at the last minute. And I want to ask the council to add an item to the agenda. This, the added item will be a discussion and a request for a letter of support from the city council for a bill that is currently in the legislature. And the bill is related to funding for the School of Mines and Technology to purchase the former Ascent Innovation Building that now sits on the School of Mines campus. And there's a lot to say about this, but I would just ask to add this item on the agenda now.
Mr. Mayor.
Second.
May I get clarification from City Attorney if we are violating any meeting notices with doing that?
Of course you may.
You know, the agenda is always that it is a proposed agenda because it's not expending money or taking any real action other than an action of saying, hey, we support this. Ideally, it would have been noticed, but I don't think it's really that big of a legal issue that it wasn't.
Is this more of a direct staff to put a letter together? Or is this a-
This would be for requesting that the city council allow me to put a letter of support together on behalf of the city council that would go to the legislators in peer to support this bill.
All right, so it won't come back to us, in other words?
Won't come back to us, and there's no funding by the city to carry this out.
And that's fine, City Attorney. Okay. I just have to lead, make sure that we're doing everything properly. Thank you.
Okay. And so for the agenda, let's add this as item 26A, right after consent items. If that's okay, could someone make a motion?
Motion made to 26A.
Okay, we have a motion by Strowman and a second for, by Evans for adding item 26A to the agenda. Thank you for that. Sorry for the surprise. Okay, all in favor of that, adopting the agenda with that addition, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, for words and recognitions. Speaking of the legislature, one of our local representatives was, has been following the news and the progress of the city council and took note of an appointment by one of our own, Richie Nordstrom. If you could come on up, Richie. Representative Becky Drury took note of Mr. Nordstrom's appointment to a National League of Cities Committee, and she then initiated House Commemoration 8004, which I'll read now. "A legislative commemoration honoring Richie Nordstrom for being selected to join the National League of Cities 2022 Transportation and Infrastructure Services Federal Advocacy Committee. Whereas on January 5, 2022, Rapid City Alderman Richie Nord-" (laughing). It's a sign from above.
Yep, it is.
Honestly, we have the new audio system on order. It's been, Jim is back there rolling his eyes now. It's been delayed, 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 and now it's supposed to be sometime in the next decade or so that it will be here. So anyway, we're struggling with this audio system. I'm going to start over. "Whereas on January 5, 2022, Rapid City Alderman Richie Nordstrom was selected to represent South Dakota and provide input and share insight on transportation and infrastructure issues facing municipalities and communities around the country. And whereas Alderman Nordstrom will work alongside diverse groups of local leaders to shape the policy positions of the National League of Cities and to advocate for municipalities and communities before Congress and the President of the United States. And whereas Richie Nordstrom will observe the effective strategies used in other municipalities and communities and use this appointment to improve Rapid City and by extension, South Dakota. Now therefore it be commemorated by the 97th Legislature of the State of South Dakota that Alderman Richie Nordstrom be honored for his selection to the National League of Cities 2022 Transportation and Infrastructure Services Federal Advocacy Committee." So congratulations, Richie.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you, Mayor. And one of the things I get the opportunity to stand by this gentleman is you never know what kind of a roasting joke today is going to play on me here after a while. So I also want to thank Becky Drury for, a previous council member and now a state representative to the state of South Dakota for coming up with this commemoration. I'm deeply honored what she has put together for me here on this. And then there's a lot of things that are happening, not only on the local level, the state level has got a lot of things that are taking place. And then hopefully in March, the middle of March, I get the opportunity to go to DC to see what is happening for us here in Rapid City on a national level. And so I want to be at the table for the city of Rapid City. So I think this is a great opportunity and a learning opportunity for, for not only myself but for the rest of the community. So thank you for this, and thank you, Mayor, and to Representative Drury. Thanks.
public comment speaker forms submitted, so we'll skip that for tonight. Then on to non-public hearing items, items 1 through 27. We'll open public comment on items 1 through 26. These are the public hearing items. This is where the city council may approve all of these consent items at once, or they may pull individual items off for separate consideration. We'll go to Lance Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item 18.
Darla Drew.
Item 8, please.
Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Items 25 and 26.
Rick Strowman.
26A.
A. Any others? Okay, if that's all, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items with the exception of 18, 8, 25, 26, 26A. Motion by Evans, second by Lehman. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 8. "Authorized the Public Works Director or is designee to apply for and accept and administer, if awarded, the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources Volkswagen Settlement Grant for reimbursement of up to 45% for the purchase of a new snowplow for the street department." Darla Drew.
Thank you very much. I'd like to direct a question to Dale Tech, if I could.
Please.
Hello, Director Tech. When I was on the Sustainability Committee, we were following this through the legal process. And I just would like to know a little bit more about what we're spending this on and if it meets the EPA standards that they're looking for. I know they're looking for a reduction in diesel use vehicles. Is, is that what we're getting here? I mean, I know we got a new snowplow, which is great, and at least 45% of it, if we're awarded. But just tell me a little bit more about that vehicle, if you could, please.
The proposed vehicle we're purchasing is a current model year diesel snowplow truck. And all diesel engines today are highly regulated by the EPA as far as emission standards are concerned. So the vehicle we're purchasing meets all current emission standards set by the EPA. And that's part of the requirement of this grant is whatever you're purchasing must meet current emission standards. And then the vehicle that, we have to scrap a vehicle that is an older vehicle that does not meet emission standards. So we've identified a vehicle, it's an old Vector truck that our street department uses to maintain storm inlets, and it's a pre-emissions diesel truck. So we will be destroying the engine and the transmission. Per the terms of this grant, we have to destroy the vehicle so it can no longer pollute.
Okay. And I know that there are, there's more funds left here. I think I read somewhere there 60% of this fund is left for South Dakota use. Do you have any plans on applying for that? Or if there's some way that we could maybe even get some of this money to go to the Sustainability Committee? I didn't really see any of that as a possibility when I read through what the, what they would give it to. But are you guys preparing to ask for any more of that? We've got until 2026, I think.
No, this grant is very specific about vehicle replacement. So there aren't abilities to use any of this funding that's left for any other purposes other than for vehicle replacement.
Okay, well, that satisfies me. But yeah, we, we were very excited when this came through and would give some money to actually replacing some vehicles. But I didn't know what, what the designations were and they were that detailed. So thank you very much.
To Evans.
I believe a couple of years ago, the Sustainability Committee really investigated, in fact, even applied, because there was a first designation of these funds for EV charging stations. And I believe we did send in some stuff, and it was a little sketchy two years later. But I do know that all of the funds pretty much went toward charging stations along I-90, and municipalities that had applied for these pretty much were dismissed because they wanted to accomplish that. So they are pigeonholed for certain things. And we missed the EV charging one because it was used elsewhere in the state. But I believe we did apply for that.
Councilman Evans, did you follow up on that? Did they actually do that, then?
I believe so. But like, this took me by surprise. I could check on it and see. But I think we got word back that it was gone. Because I thought we were going to lose it all, Sioux Falls, but I think we lost it all to the state.
Okay.
So, thanks.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. If you'll allow me a little bit of latitude on some of these responses for this, comments on this particular item. I have a little bit of basic information for the, for the community. First of all, there's a debate that's going on on the national level about diesel vehicles being on the road, especially over the road vehicles. And I would imagine that will include vehicles that we have that are still diesel-driven vehicles. And then the debate also includes electric vehicles. And then stay tuned for something new for me is hydrogen fuel cells that is coming in the process. And then the other part is, has to do with EV charging. There is some additional information, and it's going to take quite a bit of your time. So I can share that EV charging information with you later about that. But essentially, there is coming to the state of South Dakota money for EV charging. And then, again, just a footnote for everything that's being discussed tonight. So there's a lot more information that's available. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the-
All right, thank you. We have a motion to approve by Lehman, second by Solomon. All in favor of approval of item 8, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 18, authorize staff to apply for and accept if awarded the Homeland Security Grant in the amount of $27,475. Lance Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to table this item per the fire department's request.
Okay. Second by Pat Jones. Then we'll go to a vote on this tabling of item 18 at the fire department's request. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 25. "Approve award of base bids plus Schedule 2 for trenchless sanitary sewer rehabilitation, Jackson Boulevard, to the lowest responsible bidder, mainline contracting in the amount of $711,262.30." Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move approval of item 25 and keep the floor, if I can get a second, please.
Okay. Second by Darla Drew. Go ahead.
Thank you. Question for Director Tech?
Yes.
Director Tech, can you please let us know how, how close that was to the engineer estimate for this project?
Yes. The engineer's estimate was approximately $605,000 on this project, and the bid with the alternate came in at $711,000 approximately. So that's about a 17% increase over what our engineer's estimate. This type of project is unique. There are costs in it that you can't be measured by the foot. For instance, for this project, there's some bypass pumping that is necessary because you've got a continuous flow of sewage through the sewer main that you're trying to replace. So you've got to pump it around. So those costs are difficult for engineers to estimate. Certainly, that goes to the contractor's means and methods. So that's where the bulk of this price difference was, as far as the difference between the engineer's estimate. We believe it's a fair bid. That's why we're recommending a ward of it.
Thank you. No more questions.
Okay, we have a motion and a second then to approve item 25. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 26, approve award of total bid for Deadwood Avenue reconstruction, Phase 1, opened on February 15, 2022, to the lowest responsible bidder, heavy constructors, in the amount of $2,864,025.82. Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Move approval, approval of item 26, and I'd like to keep the floor, if I can get a second, please.
Okay, second by Richie Nordstrom. Go ahead.
Thank you. Question for Director Tech?
Yes.
Same question on this. How close did this come to the engineer's estimate?
The engineer's estimate was approximately $2.7 million. So low bid, 2.864, so about a 6% difference. We did receive two bids, one at 2.864 and the other one at 2.991. So pretty close bids, really, for the scope of work. So we're confident this is a good price with two close bids that were received and, and not too far off engineer's estimates. So Stretch of Roads needs a lot of repair, and it'd be good to get it under contract.
Thank you very much. And one of the main reasons I wanted to ask these is, we all know things are costing more, and it's, puts more pressure on our folks to, to try to come up with the act, with the estimated cost, I'm sure, because the market is not responding in a normal manner to things. So I know it's tougher for our folks to come up with good estimates and then when we get bids. So it's nice that they were close. And I appreciate the work, Mr. Tech, that you and your folks do to make these things happen. So thank you for that information. And that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second on item 26 for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 26A is the added item, and this is a discussion and a request for a letter of support. So here's the basic story, and I'm going to get some additional conversation going here on the council so everyone can understand what's being asked. A number of years ago, the Economic Development Foundation and a handful of other funding sources funded the construction of- funded the construction of a business incubator on the campus of the School of Mines. This was operated by the Economic Development Partnership under the Economic Development Foundation. And it was eventually named the Ascent Innovation Incubator. And so all this was done with the understanding that when this building was no longer of use and the Economic Development Partnership would move from that building, that it would be available for sale to the School of Mines in order to recapture some of the funding to go back to the foundation. In the final chapter of this saga, the Economic Development Partnership has become Elevate Rapid City. Elevate Rapid City has now constructed a much larger and more effective business incubator and has incurred a great deal of debt. So the arrangement, the understanding then, was put into motion. And Dr. Jim Rankin from the School of Mines Technology has been contacting legislators. And there is a bill, without the bill number at this moment, but there's a bill in appropriations that got approved in the Senate Appropriations today and will now move on to the next step. That bill is to provide funding for the purchase of this Ascent Innovation Building on the Mines Campus. We've heard that there's some debate about this bill in the legislature. And I believe it's important to let the city council at least state their position on this transaction. I myself have interacted with some legislators on this issue. And there may even be a little bit of misunderstanding about the arrangement or the purpose that this building will serve. So knowing all of that, we'll go on to others for discussion. Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll attempt a motion. I make a motion to authorize the mayor to write a letter of support for the purchase of the Ascent Innovation Building on the campus of School of Mines by the South Dakota School of Mines Technology.
Second.
Would that be enough?
On behalf of the city council.
On behalf of the city council. Absolutely.
Okay.
So authorize the mayor on behalf of the city council to write a letter of support. If I get, did I get a second and retain the floor?
Second by Pat Jones.
And retain the floor. Just for clarity's sake, and you may know this, it may be your city attorney, but does the city have any financial stake in this?
I do not believe the city does, no.
So I didn't know if we had once owned a piece. Just want to make sure that that's clear out there, that this is a support between two other parties, but that we think it's in the best interest of Rapid City and the state as a whole.
Yep, correct. Thank you. Greg Strowman.
Thank you, Mayor. The Ascent Building was built on the School of Mines Campus. And the design was for that to be used as a business incubator, as the mayor said. And I think it was successful in its mission. And it has now moved on to the Ascent Innovation Building, also known as the D-Lab or the David Lust Accelerated Building in honor of David Lust and his perilous efforts on behalf of Rapid City and the entire state, whether he was serving in the state legislature or as a citizen of Rapid City. I think it's appropriate for this building to be utilized by the School of Mines. It's already situated there. It's ready to go. And I think it's a benefit to the entire state of South Dakota. So I would like to see the legislature authorize the Board of Regents to purchase it. And as the mayor has been in touch with some legislators, I have also from different parts of the state. I think that this is an appropriate, more than appropriate use of funding. And it's a wise decision. And I think that that building will be utilized well under the capable leadership of President Jim Rankin at the School of Mines. And I think this is something that would really benefit the city and the School of Mines and the state. You'll...
Bill Evans.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to encourage us to support this wholeheartedly. It represents excellent value for the city. A great thing happening in terms of coming back and fulfilling its need, like Mr. Strowman said. So this was a successful endeavor. And I just caution us that when we do receive the funds if this happens, that we make sure the, doesn't just meld into the general budget, but we earmark it for a special project or something, something related to what it became, so.
Yeah, clarification. This will be a financial transaction between the state, Board of Regents, I believe, will pay Elevate Rapid City for the building on the School of Mines Campus.
Right, okay. That was a bit of clarification I needed, and then now we understand. Okay, so it does go to Elevate.
Go to Elevate.
All right. That, I'm glad I know that. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been involved with this, oh gosh, pretty much since I was starting up with the city council. The working relationship that we've had between the previous economic development and now the Ascent Innovation process is something I value quite highly because it's been a very good return on our investment for the city of Rapid City, even if we didn't put any money into it. It was still a good thing for the city of Rapid City. And I guess the best thing I can say about this whole thing is that there's a lot of people that have got their hands on this to make this shuttle through the process. And I just want to applaud all the people that have been involved in this directly and indirectly, bringing this to fruition. And I, hopefully, that people will be able to support and also contact the legislators as well for bringing this to fruition. Thank you, Mayor. I yield.
You. Darla Drew.
Okay, Mayor, I have a question since we don't have anything written here. So am I to understand that the sale of this, you know, although we have nothing to do with it, the sale of it, the money goes to Elevate?
Yes. Elevate Build, what is now Elevate by the Economic Development Foundation, funded and built this building on the School of Mines Campus for Elevate's use. Now that they are done using that building, they've moved out to the new building, they want to sell this building to the School of Mines for School of Mines use. And so that's the reason for the bill is to appropriate funding.
So I'm just clear, you know, I just, this building's been there quite a while, though, right?
It's been more than ten years. I don't know exactly how many years.
Are there any other parties interested in buying it? I mean, why are we even discussing this? I mean, is there some kind of an idea that someone else will swoop in and buy it?
No, it's just that there's a belief that some of the legislators may not understand the arrangement. They may not understand the value. And I think this is just to bring clarity for those decision-makers in peer as they evaluate this bill and take a vote on it.
Is there an identified use for the building after it's handed off or wherever?
Dr. Rankin has identified a use for it, and I believe it's some type of laboratory.
I think that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything that's good for the School of Mines tends to be good for Rapid City as they grow and improve and do well. It impacts the city in a positive manner. And Elevate has certainly proved their worth to the city in economic development, all the things that they've been doing. So our letter of support will benefit those two organizations. Seems like a wise thing to do on our part. So thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up tonight and doing that on behalf of the council. I support it a hundred percent.
Well, you can thank Greg Strowman. He's been working on this as well. And I think we share everyone's sentiment that this, Elevate's been good for Rapid City. There are currently hundreds of very good-paying jobs in Rapid City, primary and secondary jobs. And there's much more to be done in the future, and this will be a big help. So thank you for that discussion and for allowing this to be on the agenda. And tomorrow, I will come up with a draft of a letter that echoes the sentiments here tonight and get that sent off to the legislature. Okay? Thank you all. All in favor then of approval of sending the letter of support from the city council? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Now on to non-consent items. That is Item 27. There are no speaker requests on Item 27, so this is what it says. Uphold denial of exception request from Kale McDeboe to waive requirement to construct Golden Eagle Drive right-of-way in conjunction with the proposed subdivision Villas at Vilagio. And this recommendation is to acknowledge the applicant's request to withdraw this appeal. We have a motion to acknowledge by Lehman. Second by who? Pat Jones made the second. And all in favor of that motion then, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Public hearing items, 28 through 43. Again, we have no speaker requests on any of these items, so we will forego the public hearing. And we'll go to consent public hearing items, 28 through 35. The council like to approve all these at once or take some of them separately? We have a motion by Jones to approve 28 through 35. And a second by Bill Evans. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's into the consent public hearing calendar. Now to non-consent public hearing items, 36 through 43. Item 36, second reading of Ordinance 6516 and Ordinance amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Dream Design International for David Lamb and Andrea Anderson Revocable Trust for rezoning request from no-use district to light industrial district for property generally described as being located southeast of the intersection of Highway 79 and Old Folsom Road. And the recommendation is to approve contingent on the associated annexation. We have that motion by Jason Solomon, second by Darla Drew. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Item 37, second reading, Ordinance 6517 and Ordinance amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Dream Design International for David Lamb and Andrea Anderson Revocable Trust for rezoning request from no-use district to heavy industrial district for property generally described as being located southeast of the intersection of Highway 79 and Old Folsom Road. And again, the recommendation is to approve contingent on the associated annexation. We have the motion for approval by Pat Jones. Second by Darla Drew. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 38, second reading, Ordinance 6518 and Ordinance amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Dream Design International for David Lamb and Andrea Anderson Revocable Trust for a rezoning request from no-use district to general commercial district for property generally described as being located southeast of the intersection of Highway 79 and Old Folsom Road. Recommendation is to approve contingent on associated annexation. We have that motion by Darla Drew. And a second by Richie Nordstrom. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. They all look the same. Is this Item 39? Okay, Item 39, second reading, Ordinance 6519 and Ordinance amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Dream Design International for David Lamb and Andrea Anderson Revocable Trust for rezoning request from no-use district to heavy industrial district for property generally described as being located southeast of the intersection of Highway 79 and Old Folsom Road. Recommendations to approve contingent on the associated annexation. Okay, we have that motion by Pat Jones. Second by Bill Evans. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 40, second reading, Ordinance 6529 and Ordinance amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Frank Boyle for a rezoning request from general commercial district to light industrial district for property generally described as being located at 3637 Edwards Street. And the recommendation is to approve in conjunction with a planned development designation. We have that motion by Lance Lehman. Second Richie Nordstrom. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 41, second reading, Ordinance 6530 and Ordinance amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions for Marvin and Kay Pashke for a rezoning request from no-use to heavy industrial district for property generally described as being located east of Highway 79, south of Old Folsom Road. The recommendation is to approve contingent on associated annexation. We have that motion by Pat Jones. We'll go to Darla, and a second by Richie Nordstrom. We'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you. I guess I would direct this question to either Dale or Director Vicki Fisher. We're seeing a lot of these approved in conjunction with associated annexation. Could you please explain what we're looking forward to? I mean, are there a lot of annexations coming up? What's going on here?
Vicki Fisher.
So at your last city council meeting, you actually took action on the annexation. So that's already been approved. We anticipate that a preliminary subdivision plan will come before you at your next meeting that will show the lot layouts and projected streets and utility extensions that will be somewhat reflective of why these rezones are ahead of it. Remember, it takes a little longer to rezone property than it takes to get the preliminary subdivision plan through. They started out together. One just got ahead of the other.
Your knowledge is always appreciated. Thank you, Vicki. I yield.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of Item 41. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 42, second reading, Ordinance 6531 and Ordinance amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions for E.M. Hoff Family Limited Partnership for rezoning request from no-use district to heavy industrial district for property generally described as being located west of Old Folsom Road and east of Highway 79. And the recommendation, again, is to approve contingent on the associated annexation. Motion to approve by Drew and a second by Lance Lehman. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 43, second reading, Ordinance 6532 and Ordinance amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Evan Hayes for rezoning request from Park Forest District to low-density residential district for property generally described as being located at 1539 Forest Hills Drive. We have two motions to approve. Greg Strowman gets the motion. Lance Lehman gets the second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we'll have to go to a roll call vote now, please.
Jones. Lehman.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Strowman.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to one.
Okay, thank you. Item 44 is the bill list. And for that, we'll go to Finance Director Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the toll is that which is attached at $9,835,793.89.
Motion approved, Solomon. Second by Jones. All in favor of approving the bill list, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn by Lehman. Second by Drew. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.